Thank you for coming and sharing your evening with us. We're gonna get this study session under, uh, started. So it is past 5:30, we're waiting, uh, Councilmember Rush is in traffic, he is on his way. Um, but for this, let's do a call to order. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot.
Here.
Councilmember Rush. Councilmember Tesari.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rigby.
Here.
Mayor Lorimer.
Here. Okay, um, so before we kick off and I read through, uh, public comment, um, language, I want to say this is our first study session that we've ever had, actually, in the city of Eastvale, so thank you for joining us tonight on that, on this. In conjunction with this, and I think many of you, maybe this is, maybe this is how you heard about it, we sent out a snapshot survey via social media, um, to get resident feedback as to what they would like to see in the community. The idea behind this study session is a sort of brainstorming of things that we would like to see come forward this year, um, that we can implement as council, things to come before the council. We have to also remember, however, that, uh, we do, are on a different budget cycle, so we are currently working within the seventeen, eighteen budget, um, as opposed to the eighteen, nineteen, and our fiscal year, July, I believe, is when we're, our next one is going to happen. So, any remaining money or things that we can work on in this interim, or things to start planning for, working towards, uh, for the next fiscal year, um, are things that we'd like to discuss. So, we did receive a great deal of feedback from the community in the short period of time. Look at that, stuff's on this. We got one thousand, one hundred and forty-two comments, uh, or respondents, and we got a lot of comments. I was reading through, uh, a number of them, as I think many of us were up here. Um, anyway, I'm gonna move forward. Uh, so, at this time, I'm gonna call for public comments, and, um, in these public comments, let me, yes? Hmm? Did I totally skip that? I totally skipped that. I'm excited about this study session. So, um, thank you, Mr. Tesari. Pledge of allegiance. In fact, because you reminded me, you get to lead it for us now.
All right. Please join me in recognizing the flag of the greatest country on God's green earth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, the public comment, let me read through this. Um, this is a time when any member of the public may bring a matter to the attention of the mayor and the city council that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the mayor's, city councils', and the staff's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at this time, such comment, at the time that such comments are made, thus your comments may be agendized for a future meeting or referred to staff. Um, anyway, if you have a comment, we have public comment cards in the back, I believe they're blue, um, if you could fill that out, that would be appreciated. Um, so, at this time, Mr. Aguilar, do we have any public comment cards?
We received no public comment cards.
Okay. Well, then, we're gonna move straight into the, uh, presentation, I believe staff has a presentation for us. Yes? Mrs. Neeson. Nissen, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, members of the public. As Mayor Lorimer had stated, um, part of this evening's discussion was to sort of stimulate the discussion from the standpoint of what's important to our citizens. So with that, we, we did a very, um, brief, uh, it's not a survey, it's more of a, uh, test, taking the temperature of what, what's really important to the citizens. And so, of the respondents, the number of respondents that you saw on the previous slide, uh, this shows what, what are the, what the citizens consider to be the priority. As you'll see, increased public safety is the number one, um, priority to our citizens. And as you review some of the comments, because they're, on this snapshot, there was a section for our citizens to provide, uh, a comment that was not, uh, associated with this, so it's, they were able to just provide their independent feedback. As you go through some of those comments, and there are a lot, you will see, again, the same theme, about wanting increased police presence and increased patrol, uh, officers. So, um, I actually commend the council, because you did, you did take care of that. That's actually, um, something that was recently passed through the city council by a unanimous five-zero vote, to increase the sheriff's department, um, patrol hours by ten hours per day, taking our contracted hours up to a hundred hours a day. And then, you also added a dedicated motorcycle officer position for traffic, so, um, that, that is moving in a step in the right direction, but this is, is really an opportunity for the council to, to see what some of the, the hot buttons are for our citizens, and to just stimulate some conversation and brainstorming amongst the council members, and, and give some staff some marching orders for the remainder of the fiscal year. And then, we will, of course, be having, um, several budget workshops, like we, we have done in the previous two years, um, and we will sort of peel back the onion on some of these, these items that, that have a longer, a longer time horizon, and build, uh, those into our budget decisions, that we come forth and present to the council for consideration. So, um, as you can see, improved traffic flow was number two. Um, I, I'm not sure if everyone can see the, the slides, I hope you can, but, um, greater entertainment options is, uh, item number three. Uh, fourth most important was, uh, strengthened partnership with the schools. We also have, in a close tie, it appears, is building a civic center. And then next, we have enhanced city communication, and, uh, almost neck and neck with that is increase of arts and culture. And then, in last place, was strengthening partnership with the parks. Um, I'd be happy, if, at the council's pleasure, to give any updates on some of those items, if you feel necessary, otherwise, um, we'd be open to question and answer, and sort of, as I said, brainstorming and, and, um, looking for some direction moving forward.
Anybody have any questions or clarification?
What about progress on building a civic center?
Yes, sir. Um, Mayor, or, excuse me, Councilmember Tesari. Uh, we, uh, we are in the process of looking for a location. We have entered into a letter of intent with, um, the developer that has the parcel, um, above the Silver Lakes project, which is in the city of Norco. Silver Lakes is in the city of Norco, but above that project is, um, a parcel that we refer to as the Palopolis property. It's approximately twenty-three gross acres, and the city has executed a letter of intent, uh, to purchase approximately seven gross acres, I'm rounding. Um, and, and so, at this time, we are still in negotiations with the developer on some of the, the deal points, but, um, that's, that is moving forward. Should the council, uh, ultimately decide to, to execute a purchase agreement, there's, there's significant, um, construction costs that we're going to have to discuss, and plan out for the future, how that, how that want, how we want to, uh, secure the funding, um, whether that's, um, through being patient and, and waiting and, and raising that revenue, through, um, economic development initiatives and, and, and sales tax, or if the council should choose to look at a, a bond, or something of that, that nature. But, at this point, it's, it's a letter of intent, we're in negotiations, um, the developer is expected to close escrow on the parcel in, um, August. And that would be the time that they would expect the city to close escrow as well, if, if the council wishes to proceed with that. Um, so, along that lines, if, moving that, um, goal through the process, we would need to, um, much like we did with the fire station, I would encourage some, uh, edge, some outreach meetings, um, you know, an RFP for an architect and design firm, whether the council wants to do a design-build type of project, um, the, these are all, all things that we would have to, to sort out as we move through the process, but land acquisition will be the first step. Um, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to, um, build a strong sense of community around the second project ever for the city to, to be owned and built by the city with citizen tax dollars. This would be a direct result of, of, um, the taxpayers' dollars at work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, clarification, questions?
I'm sorry, if I could share one more thing for the benefit of the citizens, um, according to, uh, the Riverside County Economic Development Agency, that they manage, uh, the public libraries, so this would be, um, a library that would be managed by them, but we are expected to deliver a building, so all of the operations on the interior and staff, et cetera, would be, uh, county services, uh, based on the volume of, uh, use that our current library gets, which, our current library is six thousand square feet with a occupancy of sixty, so we're, we're grossly under, um, deficient in meeting that need for our citizens. Um, the, the county has estimated that we need approximately a twenty to twenty-five thousand square foot library to service the needs of Eastvale ultimate bid, build-out.
Thank you for that.
Uh, so if I understand you correctly, the, the year-over-year cost of maintaining the staff and equipment inside the library would be taken on by the county?
Yes, sir, that's, that is what we, was kind of, if you build it, we will, we will come and, and provide the services.
Thank you.
And it is, uh, like, count, the county library system is managed by them and staffed, and, and all of the interior resources would be from them.
Clarification, questions? Okay. If, if it's all right with the council, I'd like to hear back from the residents that took time out of their schedules to come. If you have any thoughts that you want to share with the council on things that you would like to see us, um, could be now, this year, take on this year, or, we can also do longer term, um, love to hear from you. Do you have any volunteers, or anybody want to share their thoughts? Hearing none. Uh, we can get back to that. Um, I, I do want to start, does anybody have anything that, uh, given these here, things that we would like to provide, that you individually would like to see? Mr. Tesari. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, obviously, you hit on the fact that we had added the additional patrol personnel and the motor officer, um, but I, I'd like to see us also look into some ways to, to augment and, uh, assist, uh, public safety and engineering. I know we have a couple of cameras up, uh, I don't know how that's working out, if the, if it's, if it's having any kind of a benefit, that's, then I would, if it is, I would like us to look into acquiring a few more, start, you know, trying to cover some additional areas. Um, also, um, I know that, uh, we're in the process of working something out with, uh, the streetlights, but obviously converting to the LED as, as soon as possible to assist, uh, you know, with the night vision, and, um, I'd also like us to consider adding, uh, additional man-hours to the sheriff's contract in the, uh, July budget. So those are some things I'd like to see to, uh, enhance that public safety section that they commented on, and there was also the, uh, the improved traffic flow. I know engineering does a great job, you guys are on top of things, but I think we really need to focus on maintaining, uh, the good light synchronization. We, we have an, we have an evolving, uh, I thought that was my cue, you wanted me to be quiet. But, uh, you know, with, with construction and different things that are going on with the roads and, and, uh, improvements, I know our, uh, you know, these, we have different choke points that pop up around the city, but, uh, I just want us to maintain, uh, you know, being proactive on, uh, the light synchronization, and, uh, other, uh, like lane delineators, other, uh, control options, lane deline, you know, things that we can put in place to help, uh, reduce the congestion and keep the traffic flowing, so other traffic controls might come in handy. So, those are the, those are some of the things I wanted to focus on.
May, would you like me to respond to?
Please.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Tesari, for the additional cameras, um, so we do have the three pole cameras that were, um, excuse me, that we had purchased, uh, last fiscal year. Um, they're, our camera system is currently not monitored twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
But they do record, right?
Yes, they do record, so they, they are, have been utilized to help solve crimes, and, um, look at, uh, traffic collisions and, and things of that nature. They are a deterrent, uh, which we have seen, um, on Scholar Way, when the camera was in front of Roosevelt High School. Um, so, uh, building out a camera system, um, is, is a fantastic way to, to deter, um, activity, especially when you can tell that the, the intersection is being recorded, there, there are signs up, so, uh, we'll, we'll look into that. Uh, the streetlight acquisition, that is on the agenda later on this evening for council, uh, comment and direction on the agreement with Yerupa Community Services District, so that, that is moving across the finish line. Then I'd be happy to give an, uh, an additional update, um, so as soon as that is, uh, approved from the CPUC and the accounts are transferred, um, there, there is some timing that we're sort of, um, can, time constraints from Southern California Edison, because they have to do a true-up audit before we can start retrofitting and everything, but, but that is in the process. Um, that is also something that, um, uh, council has, uh, directed staff to acquire, and, and that, that burden will fall on, on the city to do, to, uh, secure the loan and the debt service, so, um, but this will, uh, be paid for through the landscape maintenance districts that are already on property tax rolls, so converting them to an LED will ultimately reduce the cost and improve the services, and what the citizens are already paying should pay for the acquisition and the retrofit and O and M. The additional ten hours in July, may, may I ask for clarification, sir? Are you asking for an additional ten hours on top of the ten hours that we just added?
Yes.
So, bringing the patrol hours up to a hundred and ten hours?
Correct.
Okay. Um, city staff, to your point about the traffic flow, um, city staff, uh, is working on, um, all the bottlenecks throughout the city. That is, that is something that we have, uh, discussed, uh, off and on at council meetings in the past, so you will see a few items coming before you in the weeks and months to, to come, to address some of the, the bottlenecks. Uh, one of them is currently under construction, which is why I think some people might've, might be late to the eve, the meeting today, is, is the, the bottleneck on Hamner in front of Swan Lake, that's currently under construction. Um, our big push was to try to resolve some of these bottlenecks in anticipation of the I-15 interchange, uh, because that will be a two-year project that's going to cause some significant discomfort at, uh, Limonite and the I-15, where we will be getting a fully improved and widened bridge deck and, um, uh, on round, on ramp and off ramp. Um, so that project is accelerating, you'll, you'll hear an update on that this evening, we do have a guest speaker coming about that, and some, uh, display boards, actually, that are, that are up here. Hello, Mr. Green. Um, he will, you'll meet him later on this evening with a presentation and an update, but he's brought us some beautiful display boards that speak to, to that project, and there are significant regional transportation projects going on, and so, we're really gonna ask for some patience and understanding from our citizens, and Mr. Green has a very catchy, um, uh, uh, phrase that we hope everyone will remember. I'm not gonna steal your thunder, sir, I'll let you, I'll let you share that this evening. Um, but, to, to come in advance of that, are, we're trying to fix some of the bottlenecks, and, um, to provide better throughput, um, throughout the city. Uh, the Goodman Commerce Center has, has done some significant improvements on Hamner and, uh, Belgrave and Cantu Galiano, which we also hope to, uh, alleviate some of the traffic congestion. Um, and, um, Joe, do you have anything you want to add on, on things that you're doing in public works at this time to improve the, the flow?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, so, we have various projects, um, the one that's very, very encouraging is, uh, we went out to bid yesterday for Hamner Avenue widening, in front of Swan Lake, and when the time is, uh, when the project is complete, we're gonna have two lanes in both directions, northbound and southbound, because in the southbound right now, there's choking point right at the entrance to the, uh, Eastvale Gateway, and we're gonna make improvements there to add another lane, and we're going to, um, micro-surface or rehab the street, uh, surface from, basically from Belgrave for the Limonite. So it's gonna be a nice, uh, addition, and, uh, other projects, um, that we're doing now are, um, enhance sidewalks, and we've been talking about it a lot, and, uh, staff is gonna come to the city council, um, at the second meeting in February, the next meeting to ask for directions on how to, uh, move ahead with this, uh, variety of options for that, enhanced sidewalks. Other than that, and, uh, we continue to have meeting with, um, yeah, regional facilities, with the Hamner Bridge replacement, and we're in the talk of, um, working with, I'm sorry, working with, um, RC Transportation to manage, uh, the widening of, um, Hamner, uh, from Norco all the way to our city, um, all, up to, um, Sliceman area, and, um, under the Tump agreements, uh, Tump is going to funding for that, and, um, a lot of exciting news that we have, um, in the city right now. Costco is coming, of course, you all know, so, thank you.
Mr. Plot, I know you had a follow-on comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna, is okay to discuss council?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, one of the, and I kind of piggyback on the, there's two areas I just want to talk about, I'd like to kind of see happen, and some of the stuff, uh, that, that was discussed, uh, Councilman Tesari already addressed, uh, but I'll just put it in two categories, first being public sa, public safety, and the second being economic development. Uh, in regards to just having a CCTV camera system, and I think, what Joe was alluding to is, I, I kind of agree with that as well, is looking to expand our current camera system out, and, and if the staff feels that our current camera system is, is functional and working well, and it's able to do the function as we want, is to maybe expand on that same type of system. Uh, more specifically, I'd like to see, if I could be more specific, that is to kind of cover our entry-exit points, uh, throughout our city, the main entry-exit points, the ins and outs, and kind of get that, just so we have, again, information, um, unless that we don't need, I mean, I don't think we need, a need for someone to, it's very costly to have someone sur, have that as twenty-four hours, uh, twenty-four-seven surveillance, but to have, you know, a DVR that can record thirty to forty-five days on a multi-layer of, of a camera system probably would be very effective, to be able to gather information. Uh, so someone just kind of elaborate more on, uh, what Councilman Tesari had mentioned. Uh, and then the second thing is that I know it's working out, but I'd love to see something this year, is, is to make progress on ALPR cameras, and any of those that don't understand that, that is the analytics, uh, license plate reader cameras, and they basically allow cars that will, when they come into your area, they scan license plates, and then immediately will say, hey, this car's a stolen vehicle, or, and it also can be placed, not just on fixed areas, but on, on police vehicles as well, so it scans license, but so we know immediately, in real time, in the data that's driven, that if there's a stolen vehicle or there's a warrant out for arrest, that we know, and it's proven to be very effective, uh, throughout various, uh, cities in California. I know in the city of Chino, they're, they're implementing, and I've already had, just in the beginning of this, this, the very beginning stage of their implementation, just had, uh, an arrest last week on Euclid and Kimball, uh, and, uh, so just something, I, I know we're making progress, but hopefully that would be a goal that I'd love to see come to fruition, is, is that, it's very effective, and I'm kind of a big advocate of that. Uh, the third thing, and, and I'd like to get Councilman Rigby's thoughts as well on this, but, obviously, we're, we're working really diligent, myself and, and Councilman Rigby, and Don Petteri is one of our, the community activists here in Eastvale, on the Neighborhood Watch program. Ideally, we're gonna be built out, meaning there's about twenty-nine zones throughout the city of Eastvale, and we're gonna be built out relatively next, probably by the end of March, and so, ideally, somewhere down the road, and I don't know if it's something this year or later, and I think there needs to be definitely looked at, but I'd love the council and staff to kind of consider the fact that maybe we kind of have either one of two options, have our public safety commissioners kind of help oversee the Neighborhood Watch program, or make separate appoint, appointments to the Neighborhood Watch program to kind of legitimize the program and to really get the city's backing, and, and I'm sure there's gonna be some, uh, we probably have to go over some legal exposure of what that looks like, but I, I think that would be very neat to have that in our city, and to actually give a city support, full city support behind it, to where we either have, like I said, an appointment, um, set by that, or, or some of our Public Safety Commission that would, you know, each commissioner could run a couple of those watches, I, I think would be very effective, and, and I think it's proven to, to shed really good results, and so to kind of encapsulate that, uh, would be nice to have, you know, so, something that I kind of encourage our, our city councilmen and, and, and our staff to kind of consider when the time is, is right, so.
Um, Councilmember Plot, how many zones will there be when you're built out?
Yeah, there'll be residential zones, as of right now, there'll be about twenty-nine, and that can always be reconfigured, but as of right now, it looks like it's twenty-nine, and then, uh, I'll defer to Councilman Rigby, on the, we're also putting in together commercial zones as well, and-
There's about four commercial zones that we have right now, um, and it'll, it'll kind of depend on the growth of the commercial industrial areas.
Yeah. So, and then my second one on economic development was more of a question, um, you know, I, I, so we're going through the survey, and, uh, going over a lot of, a lot of the kind of recurring comments was, you know, there's a lot of fast food coming in, and, and a lot of different, and I kind of would echo that same concern, that there's a lot of fast food coming, but they're not as much, like, fine dining, or just even nice restaurants to really, and I take back for what we have, but it'd be nice to have more options and, and to see that, I just don't know maybe what the game plan is for that, if we're getting a lot of interest in that sector, um, and just kind of seeing what, what that looks like, so, that was it.
Sure. Um, so, Councilmember Plot, uh, to go back to some of your items, the, um, the CCTV camera system, um, and your ALPRs, if I could speak to those two items first. Um, we are working with the city of Chino, they did install ALPRs, and, uh, city staff and the sheriff's department has already had a meeting with, uh, Chino PD and, um, some of their staff to go through their, their system, see a demo, um, they've been very, very cooperative, and, um, a, a great partner on this, so, there are some items that will be coming back to council for your consideration in the very near future, once we have some policies and, um, um, you know, we're, we're trying to piggyback on their contract, but we need to have some other items in place first before we can bring that to you for your consideration. Um, it, it does appear to be a very effective, um, means of enhancing law enforcement services without adding a, a lot of additional staff, um, but there is some policy that needs to be put in place that we need to overcome first before we can deliver that, that to you for your consideration, and, and then, of course, uh, the cost, analyzing the cost. Um, it's, the city of Chino actually has the same pole cameras as we do, but they have some demo cameras that they're working with right now, and I believe Craig Bradshaw, um, has some suggestions on, on other, other cameras that we might want to consider, um, so that will be part of the discussion. Our, our pole cameras that we, we currently have, they, for the benefit of the public, they, they, we do move them around the community. Um, they, they are not, uh, built-in stationary, that was one of the benefits of this system, that it could be moved around to address areas of, uh, that needed extra attention or had temporary concern, um, but being that there's only three of them, i- it may be something to build out in, in addition, and, again, that's something we would have to bring back to the council for consideration as to, um, what camera system that you choose, should decide to go with, and, and the cost. Um, we already have policies in place for the retention- that you choose, should decide to go with and, and the cost. Um, we already have policies in place for the retention and how, and how those should be managed. Um, the, the ALPRs is definitely something we would be working with the Sheriff's Department as well. Um, if we install our fixed-position ALPRs, meaning that they are on traffic signals, um, that's, uh, a massive database. It's actually a nationwide database based on the vendor that we're looking at at this time, that, um, allows all, all, um, um, law enforcement agencies to log in to view the data. And that is also what assists the patrol officers in, in locating some of, like, and the example you gave, the, the stolen vehicle that came through our city and got picked up by an ALPR in the city of Chino. Um, so, uh, we will definitely be collaborating with, um, with the Sheriff's Department, city of Chino, and our, our neighboring cities, um, to, to implement that and bring that back to you for your consideration. Um, and, and that's what Chino did was basically covering their main entrance and exits. Um, the, the Neighborhood Watch, uh, build-out, um, you know, the Public Safety Commission is an advisory body. Uh, of course, we'd have to speak to the legal counsel, our legal counsel, to see if, if there is an opportunity to expand the number of commissioners that are on the Public Safety Commission, so that you can kind of divide up that, that's a lot of Neighborhood Watches, if you want to, you know, divide that up to have, uh, more commissioners take responsibility of multiples. This is certainly something that, that we can discuss. I don't, um, I know that the Public Safety Commission has some very specific, um, guidelines as to what they, um, have purview over. Um, so we may need to revisit that and see if there needs, if that needs to be amended to, to include Neighborhood Watch. I, I don't have an answer for you on that point right now.
And I just kind of, maybe Todd may discuss a little more. It was just kind of more, in theory, this is what we'd like to see and kind of come to fruition. I mean, we're not quite necessarily at the point now, but
Okay.
Then when the point comes, in theory, that's kind of what potentially maybe kind of start kicking around that can a little bit, you know, as far as what that would look like.
Well, it certainly, um, you have this resource that, it's a framework that's there. And you have commissioners that have expertise and it, there, there could be a natural, um, blend there. And that's something we can certainly, uh, look into and give further direction to the council and how that might look.
And, and just to kind of clarify on that too, I don't think it's something that we would necessarily need to add additional, um, commissioners. We aren't asking them to run the individual zones. There's captains within the zones. It's just kind of an oversight thing. So it's, it's just a kind of a, a general oversight. And like, uh, Councilmember Platt said, I think when the time comes, we can get a little bit more detailed into it and see, um, if it's a possibility and if it is a possibility, how we kind of do it, so.
Okay.
Are you good? Just the economic development question.
Okay, go for it.
Well, I already asked it.
Okay.
The, the, uh,
Just if you can kind of address the, uh, just about potential restaurants, um, other than fast food, but restaurants that are potentially coming, if there's, if there's anything that's kind of looking down the road for that.
Um, so we, we do have an economic development consultant that assists with, um, business attraction. That's through, um, HDL Econ Solutions and then, of course, uh, myself. And, uh, the various brokers throughout the community that help the developers, um, secure tenants. Uh, we are working that every week. Um, it, we have to understand that economic development is a very data-driven process. And although we are the highest median household income in Riverside County at approximately $115,000 annually, um, sometimes that's not enough. Um, many of these, uh, tenants are looking for a certain type of shopping center. There is a difference between, uh, Lifestyle Center, which I would give an example of, you know, the shops at Chino Hills is Lifestyle Center, um, uh, Victoria Gardens, Irvine Spectrum, Americana, at Grand. Those, those are Lifestyle Centers. And then you have, you know, uh, the Eastvale Gateway is actually considered a neighborhood supercenter. Um, you won't get, uh, nicer dining options in some of the neighborhood shopping centers or, or a strip mall. They want to be in Lifestyle Centers for the most part. Um, so we, we hear the citizens and we're, we're working on that. Um, I think there's some very, uh, great opportunities in the Goodman Commerce Center. Um, that project has approximately 60 acres of retail. And, uh, we meet with them once a meet, once a week. And we'll be working with their brokers and going to, um, ICSC in collaboration with them and some of the other developers here to, um, to attract, um, tenants, the tenant mix that the, the citizens would like to see. Um, we have some really, they have some very creative ideas and, and they are stepping up that project. So when you enhance some of the aesthetics of the project, you're able to attract a different type of tenant. So I think you will see some nicer sit-down restaurants in that project. But the LEO master plan is, is truly the location where you create that downtown sort of vibe. And, and have, um, a place, a sense of place that keeps people there, an entertainment district, a downtown district, where you have nicer dining options and entertainment. And, and so that, that's kind of been the, the, sort of the holdout, if you will, for, for where some of this nice, these nicer options will be. But, uh, to your point about there's so much fast food, that's a da- again, it's a data-driven process. The data shows that Eastvale residents are spending their money on fast food. So, supply and demand. You see that, you know, the lines and the volume and the sales of all of these fast food restaurants, um, that's what's popular. And so that's what keeps coming because that's what can, uh, support the rents and the price per square foot. Um, so, uh, the, uh, other, other options that are coming, again, the Palopolis property. You have some opportunities for some nice, nicer restaurants in that area, because we're also looking at a hotel in that area, working with the developer for, uh, to place a hotel, um, some nice restaurant, um, and City Hall and the library. So that is also an option. Um, and then, like I said, the Goodman Commerce Center. And then you have the Walmart project on, uh, Limonite and, uh, Archibald that may, that has some out parcel pads there that may lend nicely to, to other dining options.
Well, thank, thank you. That was very thorough. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. It was very good. And listen, I'm actually a fan of a lot of the, the small dine-outs, quick fast takeouts, so I have not a problem with it. Just, it was a general question that was asked, so. But thank you. It was very thorough. Thank you.
If I may also state that, you know, some of our developers are, are much more, um, agreeable to, to thinking outside the box. Um, I really commend Evergreen that did the shopping center at Limonite and, and Sumner. Um, because once, once the city council approves a use, and this, and I'm saying this mostly for the benefit of, of the citizens, that once the city council and the planning commission approve the underlying use, we do not get to approve the tenant. It's, it's really about relationships and, and the developer and the brokers understanding the wants and needs of the community and being amenable to meeting those. So, um, this developer heard you loud and clear that we wanted something different. They heard the commissioners loud and clear that they wanted something different. So hence, you have, uh, several tenants in that particular shopping center that, that are new to, completely new to Eastvale. Um, the, uh, Ten Run Tea House, that's, they're, they're packed. Um, and so having a developer that, that is, is not just pulling from their same toolbox, because they do have relationships and they, they will go back sometimes to the same, um, the same user and just expand their, um, their franchise to include a new territory. And so that's why you might see, might see, you know, three or four, um, subways in, in one city. And may, sometimes it is often the same, same person that owns that. Um, so we're, again, working with Goodman, just had a conversation with them today. They're, they're very open to different, new and different. And, um, we have some exciting things that, that we'll be bringing, bringing to council and the commission to, to show that. So, um, it's an exciting project, not like anything that we've had in Eastvale. So I think you'll be very, very pleased with some of the changes they've made that will attract a nicer tenant.
Thank you.
Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you're right on the toolbox. We were selling Girl Scout cookies at the State of Brothers in Norco and, um, there was a Starbucks and a Boston Cleaners and a hairdresser. And it looked exactly like the Eastvale Gateway. So, who would've guessed? Um, thank you. This, I just got a chance to peruse this. This is great information. I'm curious on the library, what's happening with that, um, as far as status? And if there's anything that we can do to be moving on that aspect. You know, a lot of what I see in here is, like we've just been talking about, and I completely agree with my colleagues, restaurant entertainment and police services. Um, you know, I, I think it's, I'm satisfied with the decision we made with respect to adding the hours and the motor officer. But I think, you know, there is more that we need to do. Um, I don't know if it was mentioned before I came in, but on the aspect of commercial enforcement, um, where we are with that, I think, you know, that's something, because we talked about the residential aspects, and there's a lot of comments in here of no more homes, you know, the, the equation of homes equal crime, um, so on and so forth. But a lot of times what gets missed is the commercial aspect of it. So, um, curious as to what's going on with that. On the, uh, ALPRs, I guess it? Um, I think in your comment, Michelle kind of answered a bit of my question, but I'll ask it anyways, is it seems like there's a huge backhouse to that. Not just the actual cameras, but, uh, the monitoring, the staffing, uh, the, the database management. I'm curious if there's any system similar to that operating currently in Riverside County, either through a contract city or through the unincorporated area. I haven't seen one. So I'm not necessarily opposed to it per se. I, I have heard some rumblings from community advocates in the ACLU on privacy issues. I'm not really sure where that is. I haven't followed that, that closely. But, uh, I, I'd be interested to see what the overall picture is, mostly financial, you know. Is that going to constitute any amendment or change to our contract? Do we, if we decide to do that, are we now in the same, you know, 12-month waiting period to hire a person to, to sit there and, and run the numbers? I'm not sure what the whole back part of it, um, is. And maybe that's part of your conversations with Chino. I'd be interested to see kind of how all that works, logistically speaking. And, you know, if it's, if it's a one-staff position, I mean, is there someone sitting in front of a computer all day? You know, you get a Corona, uh, in their traffic management area. If you've ever been there, I mean, it's just this wall of screens. And, you know, it's like, um, mission control in there. So is it that elaborate, or is it just, you know, Homer Simpson sitting in front of a computer screen all day? I don't know. Um, there was another issue and it completely blanked. But since we're talking about public, or public works, and I drive this every single day, and I always tell myself, "Ask Joe, ask Joe." And then when I get home, I forget to ask you. So I'm going to ask you now. The, since the Eastvale Gateway, or not the Eastvale Gateway, the Eastvale Marketplace is getting underway, are we going to be restriping the westbound lane of Limonite between Sumner and Scholarway? Because it still does that funky, like, really wide, and then it kind of comes in. And I thought it was going to be fixed when they came in, so.
This is going to challenge, uh, Councilman Rush, uh, for engineering department, because we discussed it again. Uh, Craig brought it up to me. Uh, the last we talked, we discussed about this, how we can improve this. The issue we have is the LEO property. So, uh, when you, when you change the delineation of the streets from four lanes to two lanes or three lanes or to another six lanes, you have to have a proper length of taper and all those things. Now, um, the LEO property at the corner of Scholar and Limonite, it sticks out, there's a berm in there.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, across the street, Harada property also, um, is reduced. So, um, it is a very good point, very good question. We're going to take a look at it again one more time. We're going to, um, create an aerial photo for the entire thing, print the whole thing, big map, put on a table and see what we can do to, um, um, to improve the situations. Because it is, it is a challenge. We have, at Mulan, we have, um, a little berm there from an AC berm, just with delineators to prevent kids from crossing and stuff. And we do have some money. We have some, uh, funding actually from, in Luffy, from developments, uh, that supposedly built medians, uh, along Limonite. And, um, but they cannot do that. If they do it now, they're going to create more problems all the way, uh, going east. So
So your geometrics are actually, you're saying your geometrics are pushing you back east of Scholarway?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. And then that, that's the challenge. We have a ditch there by the LEO and, um, we, we have some right-of-way. Um, I think we have to be creative. Maybe we can approach Mr. LEO if they can maybe give some land and we can make some adjustments. And this is exactly what we're doing now in Hamner, by Swan Lake.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, I'm just hoping that we can, we can find a, the solution for that.
Good answer.
Thank you for the comments.
Uh, the last comment I have is on fire. And I don't know if we've talked about this since the budget hearing, but, um, Justin, you had given us several options, and I always get the terminology wrong between truck and engine. But there, there's a, um, there's a vehicle that we're not fully staffing. And you gave us the cost for that. And at the time, it was a little bit pricey. And you recommended, no. Um, I don't know if that's something that's desirable, if we need to bring that back to the table. I forget what the cost was, but I think just for that, it was like somewhere between 850, 1.15 million, something of that nature. It was, it was pretty high, from what I recall, um, to have that in full service. So I'll just throw that out there for discussion purposes. Um, you know, I think we should focus on public safety first and foremost, obviously. And if that's something that's, that's necessary, you know, to make sure we grow appropriately, then I'll just put that on the table for discussion.
Okay. Yeah, that's definitely something that we can look at, at the council's direction to, uh, to bring that back to the table. And it's the squad.
Squad, okay.
Remember when we just had Station 27 staffed? We had the engine staffed with three people. And then we had the medic squad with two people also. So, uh, in a sense, we had two units in the city. We still have that now. But we have two fire engines. We increased the staffing by, by a total of one. So we've got six on instead of five, but in two different geographical locations to better cover the city. So, um, our recommendation at this point would still be the same. Um, to, we don't really see the need for it in, in increased call volume, response times. Um, but if that's something that the city wishes to, to readdress, then we can definitely get you the numbers that, that they are currently and, and, uh, talk about it.
Yeah. And, and maybe that's a set aside, you know, because I don't want to get five years down the line and, and go, "We need that," and then get down the money for it, so.
And that was part of our discussion also with, uh, with my previous supervisor, was that we didn't want to do that. We didn't want to overextend the city with services that they didn't really need at this point. And then in the future, have it to where they couldn't afford it. And then we would have to start decreasing services.
You mean the one who left us?
He did. He did.
Um, and, sorry, just a, a very colorful comment. Um, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, Mayor Protem Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, just, just in the interest of time, I'll, I'll be brief. But I, I just want to, um, commend the council on that our priorities seem the same. And, um, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, but our top priority is public safety. And I think that's huge. And that, that goes to show what we feel is important in our, in our city, even though our crime rate is not, um, what it is like in other cities. But we're still very concerned in our, our public safety. It goes back to a comment that Captain Hedge made, that he's not satisfied until there's zero crime in the city. Um, so even though our crime may be decreasing, we will never be satisfied until it's completely gone. Um, which it'll unfortunately never happen. So we'll never be completely satisfied. So I think that's something that, that we keep at the forefront. And, um, I, I think just going with these three, um, the, the top three that we have there, I think are our, our areas of, of real focus. Um, I think the big one that we probably need to improve on and move a little bit more quickly on would be the economic development. Because the economic development is going to feed these other two. It's going to allow us to have funds to increase our public safety. As we see with these businesses coming in, it helps us to have that revenue. Same thing with, um, having funds, um, to use for, for other things. Uh, going back to the public safety, I, I would reiterate what Going back to the public safety, I, I would reiterate what has been said too, that I would like to see us to see what this ten hours of the increase that we just did, see what that does to our, to our city. But then also look at, as was mentioned before, the other resources that we can add to make our officers, or to allow our officers to be more productive. I think it's great that we're adding the manpower, but I think there comes a point that we need to also provide them with the resources to make them successful. Traffic flow, I think we're, we're doing a great job in, in addressing our concerns there. I know that we have several projects that we're working on. But then going to the, the third bullet there, the really revolves around the economic development, on just what we can do to continue to improve that. But I think, for the most part, what, what my colleagues have said is been great information, and what the staff has provided back has been great too, so.
Thank you. No, I, I want to echo your comments. Hearing what everybody said up here, I've had to actually cross off some of the things that I wanted to discuss, which is good, right? Let me see here, but there, there were a couple, I, I really also appreciate the residents' feedback. I had a feeling that this is how things were going to stack up when these went out. But it's good to have it affirmed, even if this is not scientific, just a snapshot that lets us know that we have what the residents have in mind too. There were a couple of things here that I would like to see brought back for us just to discuss more at length. And this coincides with some of the comments earlier related to the Neighborhood Watch program. And what I, I, I think there have already been some discussions on this, but this also goes back to something that we've also talked about before with the council, and that is coordinating our CERT programs. Have this tie in with the Neighborhood Watch programs too. And have that coordination with police, with fire. Because we have individuals right now that go through the CERT program and, and they off into the wind. They have the training, but we, we don't have those continual, I guess it's, they have the catch-and-release policy and the not-catch-and-release policy, and that's, I think we have given direction that we'd like to see something like that. The, the catch and hold-on, maintain organization, maintain interaction with police and fire. So if we could have that brought back to us, a plan and a, of action, how we move forward on that, that would be appreciated. The next thing, a lot of the comments, and we've talked about public safety, but a lot of the comments we received, of course, were on that, and we have addressed it with, I think when I came on council, there were, we were at seventy patrol hours, we're now at a hundred patrol hours, and now discussion of going six months from now to a hundred and ten. Well, and we, we want to provide it, it's been about money. But some dollars are now coming into the city and we will hopefully move forward with that when the time comes. But the other thing was traffic, improve traffic flow. And thank you for the comments about things that are in place, traffic light synchronization. If, I know we've had this come before us before. If we could make sure that those systems are working, if we have any grants that we can chase to help facilitate even more of that, that would be great. Also, in relation to empowering the community with the Neighborhood Watch, the CERT programs, volunteer patrols. I know that we have volunteers with the sheriff's department, if we could, I don't know how we can enhance that. But that would be wonderful if we could.
They'll need, they'll need a vehicle.
Okay, let's get a vehicle. But let's bring that back to the council.
They'll need a vehicle?
Well, let's do that. Bring that back to the council.
I'm sorry?
Everyone gets a car. You get a car.
Another thing, going down, and it's further down the list, but, and, and we are still a young city, but I'd like to start doing some things that cities do. And so that would be having a sister city program, something like that. Where, and maybe a fun way of doing that, we have a very ethnically diverse population here in town. Figure out, I, I know, for instance, twenty-five percent of our population, according to last census, is of Asian descent. Figure out where the majority of those individual that claim ethnic tie to a specific region of the world, if that is China, or Taiwan, or Korea, wherever that is, let's have a sister city there. We have ten percent of our population is African-American. Let's see here, what else do we have? Forty percent of our population is Hispanic or Latin. So let's figure out where that is, and I would love to see that brought forward. I think it would be a good thing to start those things that create ties long-term. I think that would be wonderful. Also, one of the things up here was the building of a civic center, again, a little bit lower down the list, but what I would like to see brought forward and is, and, and I've been speaking with an attorney about this, actually, to have the foundation set to create a library foundation. And the city of Corona is a good example, where they have done some amazing things with a community group, which is a library foundation for Corona. And it's where citizens can donate money, if, if they would like, to the library. And I actually, I've spoken with some people at the library, and they want to have this, absolutely. So if we can figure out a way to find some funds, some seed money from the city to create that foundation and enable the residents to come together, and if they so desire, to put into that, that would be great too. Let me see here. I'm gonna end it there. We are actually over time, but I appreciate everybody taking time to come out today. Before I conclude though, does anybody else have any follow-up comments, questions before we end the study session? Yeah, Mr. Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one, one quick thing that came to my mind too, is we've talked about public safety. A lot of the time we look at, we look at law enforcement. One of the things that I would like to see is what we can do additionally within our code, code enforcement division. I know we recently brought on a, a new senior code officer that we're excited about. But what additional resources may be needed to make that division within our city more successful, to make it a little bit more proactive also?
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Okay, any?
Did you want me to address any of the, to, to give you at least some updates on what's going on at staff level with some of the items that you've brought up?
Well, I, I'm hoping that these different, no, it, it, I appreciate it. It is Valentine's, but I, I, I do, I do want, from what we've talked about here today, I do want these different things that we've talked about to come back to council so that we can all, we can get your feedback and we can also provide input and direction and move forward on some of these things, so. But I appreciate that. Thank you. Everybody good? Okay, that concludes our study session. We're gonna take a brief break and reshuffle up here, very brief, according to council member Tesari. So, hang out. Thank you.